Good afternoon. This is the Thursday, January 5, 2017, meeting of the Athens City Planning Commission. There are four members present, one who is not here. Is there anyone who intends to speak to the commission today? If in the audience?
Yes.
Okay. Could you just raise your right hand? And do you swear to tell the truth to the planning commission as you know it?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Disposition of minutes. Are there any recommendations for changes, additions, concerns?
I have one comment.
Sure.
Page 1, 2, page 3. Middle of the page where it says Nancy Bane asked if this is a lot split or a minor subdivision. Paul Logue said they are interchangeable. Just to clarify, I meant that a lot split is a minor subdivision and vice versa.
Okay.
They're the same thing.
Patty, do you have that one? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Logue. Anything else? Okay. Is there -- I make a motion then to accept the minutes?
A second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
I abstain.
And there's one absentee, one abstention, and three in favor. First case today, case number 17-01, Title 43, Wireless Telecommunication at 20 Monticello Drive, a tower modification. Mr. Saroy?
Yes. Good afternoon, commissioners. This is a project description is a modification on an existing tower. SBA is proposing to add three antennas and one remote radio unit to an existing 190-foot self-supporting tower. This newest request involves modifying to the platform at 190-foot level on the tower. The change will add five feet to the existing height, increasing it to 195. No changes to the footprint of the tower will be made. It was determined that the new antenna attachment will not add to any visual impact at a one-mile radius. I drove out there and looked at the antenna mile out, and it's only going to be five feet. It's basically little -- excuse me, little antennas that are just going to be attached to it. Proper supporting documents were provided for the structural analysis of the wind and foundation requirements. After a review of the documents, it was determined that it met with the code requirements under Title 43. Facts. The applicant is Jody First of SBA Communications Corporation at 470 Davidson Road in Pittsburgh, PA. The property owner is Willoughby Management Company, 297 South Cassidy Avenue in Beckslie, Ohio. The tower owner is SBA. The site location is 20 Monticello Drive. The tax map parcel, having difficulty here, is A as in alpha, 02904000100. It's zoned R3, and the estimated value of improvement is $10,000.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from the commission? Paula?
I'm --
Digesting?
I'm just digesting the additional height. You didn't see any issues with the height increase?
No, I did not.
In aligned with our height of telecommunications towers?
That's correct. The requirements in Title 43, I drove out there, did six spots, actually. I drove out a mile out, and I couldn't -- some spots, I couldn't even see the tower. And these boxes are just real small. The antennas are really small. It's just how they're mounting them is it adds to the height, a little bit of height.
And then they'll have the existing light up at the top?
Correct.
Okay.
As you can see in the pictures, I think you have pictures that shows the -- where it shows the site elevation on A2. It shows where they add the towers, the antennas on the top. This is not your typical antenna where it comes to a point. Now they come to a point. This has a flat top on it.
Okay.
And perhaps it's addressed in here. I'm still stuck on the height increase. It says documentation in the form of propagation studies must include all backup data used to perform at requested height and a minimum 10 feet lower height to allow verification of this height need.
Is that for co-location or is it now?
I'm at 4310, height of telecommunications towers.
So is the tower height changing?
That's what I'm asking.
Were they adding an antenna to an existing tower?
Modifying adding to the platform at the 190-foot level on the tower, the change will add five feet to the existing height.
But they're not increasing the tower.
Yeah.
The physical tower, they're just adding the mounting brackets and the antenna to the top. So the actual physical tower is not changing height.
I don't know how to interpret it. The change will add five feet to the existing height, increasing it to 195 feet. Try me again.
So the antenna would be five feet in length?
With the mounting brackets, correct.
Okay. Kristi, do you have any questions?
The print is a little bit small in here. I just want to make sure that I'm reading this right on A5. So the dimensions of the antenna are, it's going to be one foot wide by like four quarter inches?
Five.
And then five feet high?
High.
Okay.
That's the actual antenna.
Okay. And where three of these are being added to the existing structure?
Correct. I think as we move, as we progress here, that we're going to have a lot more of these coming in because they're swapping out their antennas to deal with the higher requirements.
I mean, I understand that they're -- it's an existing, so it's modification to an existing, which is what we, you know, have, we promote. I'm just curious as to whether or not it indeed complies with Street 10A.
Nancy, do you have any questions?
Uh-uh. And especially because we're going to see more of these, I want to make sure that it's in full compliance with the existing regulations.
Did you want to table this?
If you wish, I can get more information.
I just didn't know if it's included in the study in the really tiny print that Nancy and I can't read.
Oh, oh, oh.
Is someone here to speak to it?
No, not for the --
No.
Normally not for the antennas. We don't have that.
So yes, I would ask to move to table.
Okay.
So I can have that answered, question answered.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That would be unanimous with one absentee. Communications, we have the wireless facility, county fairgrounds, sightings for balloon test. Did we want to go ahead with that? Or since, or can we switch since the lot split people are here right now? Is that -- because this is going to take a while.
This is just the communications.
Yeah, I'm just going to move that we just switch the order.
She's just doing it for a moment.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. And all in favor?
No.
That's unanimous with one absentee.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll move ahead for Title 21 Lot Split. The holes are health systems at 2131 East State Street. Mr. Saroy?
Yes, this is the communications, but I'll go ahead and read in the synopsis. This is Title 20 Lot Split. The request for lot split is on 2131 East State Street in Athens. The lot split consists of two parcels, one parcel consisting of 3.791 acres, which meets lot split requirements, and the parcel of 2.051 acres, of which the applicant will require width-to-depth ratio variance. Parcels have the required road frontage, and the splits are not creating any flag or land lot parcels. The 2.051 split will provide the potential for a future EMS development site. The lot splits are providing 275 of road frontage for the 3.791 acre parcel and 125 feet of road frontage for the 2.051 acre parcel off the service road. The variance needed is for the 2.052 acres with the depth of 702 feet and the width of 125 feet. This does not meet the three-to-one width and depth requirement. And I do believe members from Holzer are here to speak to.
Sure. Would you care to come to the podium and just please state your name and the firm with which you work for, please?
Yes, my name is Troy Miller, and I'm the chief strategic officer for the company, representing our Athens location today. And we basically have been asked if we would consider parsing off a lot for the potential of locating an EMS station on the east side of Athens. We aren't under contract, so I know the paper's here today. So just make sure that we're all clear on where we are. But it's just something that we would like to offer them. We looked down through and kind of had the lot pinned from a land surveyor perspective in case we want to obviously build in the future. We didn't want to give up all the land to the west of the building, although that would be sometime in the very distant future. We don't have any specific plans to do build out right now, but we want to make sure that we have expansion opportunities in the future. So therefore, when we looked at the footprint that EMS was originally looking at of a potential building site, the land that we have carved out there that's 125 feet of road frontage and goes back 275 feet, which is approximately almost as big as a football field, that they can accommodate the station that they would need over there. Now, this is, I don't want to insinuate that the EMS is building over there. It's still got to be passed by their commissioners, and we've had a commissioner come out and talk to us. We've talked to Mr. Caleb, the director of EMS, several times, and they're excited about the opportunity, but, you know, there's a lot of hoops and stuff that they have to go through. And the first step was really us getting the parcel parsed off to say, this is what we would have, and here's the legal definition and the deed and all those things so that we could begin to draft legal documents for them if they were so inclined to move in there.
Are there any questions?
My question is the 2.051 acre, by creating that, is that how you created your 3.791, the remainder parcel is the word?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, the one to the right. Okay.
Yes.
Sorry. I don't know what picture you're looking at. Just to make sure.
Let me turn it upside down. I'm feeling better now.
It's the remainder parcel that will need the variance.
No.
No.
It's the one that will be used for?
That middle one.
The yellow highlighted.
Yeah, the yellow highlighted.
Well, we all know that EMS needs a new station. They've been attempting to locate ones where they feel that they can have the access to the different parts of the county, and coming right off a highway, that's a good location.
So am I seeing correctly that this lot line is going to split an existing structure? This proposed new lot line? Am I seeing that correctly?
It was originally one lot, and we're making it into three.
Yeah.
There's no structure.
Am I looking at the wrong thing?
Could you mind if I approach it?
Oh, oh, oh.
It's the entire thing, Kristi.
Oh, see, they don't show the division on this. That's, it's on this, this is the
Oh, okay.
Blank parcel.
Classic.
Okay.
That's correct.
Sorry about that.
Yep.
This is an odd question. And I want to hear from you if it hinders Holzer at all. If we make the recommendation to approve this with the variance to city council, can we specifically tie it to the EMS station? Or is this an endeavor by Holzer to divest of this property? Or was this really, you know, the big deed?
That specific parcel, the only reason that we have pinned it, that middle thing, is for the EMS. We have, we're not in any other talks to do anything with that, and if it needed to be contingent, I don't, I don't care. I mean, that's why we're doing it. But we are expending money to do the, we did surveys, and we'll do, we'll have to do the deep prep and those things. But if, if the EMS thing didn't work out, I would think that, you know, our plan would be, and it would go through my office, so there's no other planning going on, but we would just keep it for future building. I did talk to Rick today, and he said that he didn't think, and I know this is public, but he didn't think that they would be able to get anything done in '17, just because of all the stuff that would have to go through the county, because it isn't ultimately his choice. It's the commissioners and those things. So, but we got to start and get the process going if we want to do it.
Well, unless there's further questions, I would like to move to recommend the variance to city council with the caveat that it is for emergency service facility.
This is just the communications.
Oh.
Trying to hurry it along.
I guess I played my cards out. Sorry.
So when they come back here next year, they know what to do?
Right, but they would have to come back as a case.
Next week.
Right.
Okay. Anything else? We're good. Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And read all about it, right?
Okay. The wireless facility, county fairgrounds sighting, sightings, I'm sorry, for balloon test. Mr. Saroy?
Yes. Myself and Mr. Logue sat down and reviewed a, per the Title 43 of one-mile radius, and we, Paul, we identified some areas that would be presented to view the balloon test from. And I do believe that map has been provided for you. We picked 10 spots that will have to be viewed from and get pictures from. So the company that is going to be doing the sighting process will have to take pictures from all of these 10 sites.
Well, here I go off the end here. Reviewing, and I know that I'm a little come lately to this because I wasn't able to be here at the last meeting, and it is about the wireless facility county fairgrounds, not related to the balloon test. But when I delve into our Title 43, 4314, that speaks to lots and setbacks, has a shall that all proposed towers and any other proposed wireless telecommunications facility structures shall be setback from abutting parcels by the greater the following distance, equal to the height of the proposed tower or wireless telecommunications facility structure plus 10% of the height of the tower or the existing setback requirements of the underlying zoning district, whichever is greater.
That's correct.
So which is greater?
Which is greater?
What's in 43? Because it's a, I believe it's an M-zone.
That's right.
So the zero setback, I believe, an M-zone, but might switch because of uses, but that, everybody's aware of that, I believe, Paula, that they're going to need a
I thought it needed a variance.
Right.
How do you do a variance when there's a shall?
The planning commission reviews that. It says in there that for, I forget where.
Okay.
That's a good question.
I should think so.
4314.
I don't, I don't see any relief in that component.
No, there's, it's somewhere in this section. We discussed it specifically with the applicant at the time that they had met.
Since this is greater probably, right?
Yeah. Exceptions. Don't see it there.
It is in here somewhere, Paula.
That's right. That's right.
I don't see it. I don't see that.
I'm not sure where it is, but I
I would like to see that.
I do know we specifically conveyed that to the applicant, who actually I don't believe they've actually applied yet, but we conveyed that to them when they first proposed this site, that it didn't meet the setback requirements, and because of that, there's a variance procedure, and it's in, it's tough to find these things sometimes
Sure.
when it's proposed at the last second there.
Sorry.
So if they had to meet it, Paul or Rick, how, how much of a space would they need, including the towers plus whatever?
Offhand, I don't know, Nancy.
Okay. So have you seen the final plans at all?
I've seen the same things you guys have seen, which they presented last week or a couple of weeks ago.
It's in the front seat of my car.
They haven't applied yet. Again, these are questions, if you have questions about those things, Rick can relay that to the applicant. As far as the details of how far they're not meeting setbacks, et cetera.
Including the, anything that's on top, right?
Sure, yeah.
Okay. So about, do you know what distance it is? Mine's in the front seat of my car. It's not very
I don't know any of this offhand. I'm sorry.
I mean, we have the same thing.
I don't have any of that information with me this morning.
You don't have anything in front of you. I don't have it in front of me.
Right. Hold on. But I do know, again, they have not applied. There is something in this section that does give relief, that the planning commission has the authority to give relief. Now, your point about shall, Paula, that's beyond, that's above my
Law director request.
Scope of understanding.
Sure.
Talks about a variance.
The overall height is 160 feet of the tower.
Plus how much?
160 feet.
Plus 10%.
So 16 feet, yes. About 180 then, huh?
Yeah.
I'm only one member, but I would be adverse to granting a variance from the distance requirement, given the property is surrounded.
The other question I had, and you may not be able to answer, and I apologize again, I entered an application for a new tower. It states, and I read the narrative from the previous, that copies of written requests and responses for shared use shall be provided to the city in the application, so they, where they've actually gone out.
They have not applied yet.
They have not applied yet.
Okay, all right. Well, this is the odd
He's already emailed me with all those questions.
These are all communications. They are putting together all of the information to apply.
So we're trying to field questions from you to give to them, to present to them.
Right.
So they have all the information required when they come in and present.
So are you not sure what venue we get to speak to? Now, if we're saying it here and they're not here, and then saying relay it to you, how do we speak as a voice or not? I'm just asking.
No, you're thinking of the antennas. Normally, we don't have anybody come in for the antennas. This is a tower, and the gentleman, they will be here when they, for the actual case file. Right now, we're just communicating that we presented the map to get approval from you so they could go ahead and do the tests with the balloons.
I guess
So if you have additional questions.
We gave you a couple.
Can we review what those questions are so that
Yes.
Oh, I'm not, I'm not
Can we itemize them now?
I'm not even fully through it, and so that's why I
Those can also be itemized through email or
Right.
So I guess
You have more opportunity to review this.
Process, and I see they're following the process because we published, you know, the intent for this balloon test.
Correct.
But how far do we let them get down the road before saying, hey? I mean, that's, that's just a question I'm asking. Is this, there's a cost associated with their expense?
Right. That's correct. I would say if the planning commission has concerns, and they're aware that they're, the applicant's going to need a variance, that the planning commission should probably address those concerns with them prior to investing in balloon tests and other things, because you're completely right. Those are going to be costly.
Right.
Costly to an applicant.
So at this case, I would move to table something again under communications, but that doesn't make any sense. I, but I'm not, I'm stumped.
Since you were gone and you're allowed to go, but I believe that they seemed amenable. They had other options with respect to location of the tower as they discussed with us, and they were, they weren't rigid as the tower will be in their proposal. I mean, I thought they were flailing, not flailing, flexing around myself. I thought they did a nice job in presenting. But I don't know.
I guess just reading from the outside in, and I didn't watch the planning commission, that they, they've actually identified this site as the site that they want to utilize here.
Correct.
But there were some options within this site.
Oh, okay.
Like we could do this, we could do that, we could shorten it, I mean, lower
I did read about the reduction of
The height, yes. It could work with the height. Right. Correct.
Because they were still in consultation with the fairground board?
Correct.
Because I understand, if I remember from the meeting, that the gentleman said they still had some issues that they wanted to work out as well.
That's correct.
Okay. Although they had a preference in terms of the height.
Right.
People that
And that, that preference has to do with the commercial application of the height of the tower, how much antennas they can put on it.
Can we invite them back to come for the next communication?
Yes.
Prior to establishing a balloon test? Does the commission, the commission, does the commission think of that?
Yes, they're open to it, sure.
I would like, I would like to request from the commissioners the questions so I can present it to them, so they can answer those before they come back.
Okay.
If possible.
Let's all get comfortable then.
If possible.
I guess my would be going back to the fairground board if they have solidified, what they want, because they had wanted the smaller size, obviously, but if they had settled on that, or if they're still flexible to the idea of the taller tower.
Of course, you heard my question about the shall, and under 4307C, it says the city may reject applications not meeting the requirements stated herein. So those kind of go together.
Hand in hand, right.
And you're going to, this is where I'm confused because of the way that it's worded, and they haven't applied yet, but under 4307G, the applicant must provide documentation to verify as the right to proceed as a proposed, as proposed in the site. This would require an executed copy of the lease with the landlord or landlord or assigned letter acknowledging. Again, I asked about the propagation studies that demonstrate a significant gap in coverage or if a capacity need, including analysis of current and projected usage.
Right. I think the commissioners get an Right. I think the commissioners get an appreciate that there's a five thousand dollar non-refundable fee, so they're trying to get a lot of their answers, their questions answered before they submit their final application. So I think that's why we're proceeding in this manner. But I don't think they're adverse to attending another meeting to answer any additional question the commissioners may have.
Again, forty-three oh seven, man. L one, the copies of the written requests and responses for the shared use, along with any letters of rejection stating the reasons for the rejection. I'd like to see what they propose to comply with, and again, boy, this is a long section, forty-three oh seven. Oh. Um, how they cited is to minimize visual intrusion and have the least adverse visual effect on the environment, the character, and the residences in the area. Because even though it's at the back of the fairgrounds, next to a cemetery, there are, you know, it is in the West End neighborhood. The computer, under P one, the computer-generated zone of visibility map at a minimum of one mile radius without the foliage, so they're at good timing for that. Pictorial two representations of the before and after from key viewpoints, both inside and outside of the city. And it says, and from any other location where the site is visible to a large number of visitors. I would contend the fairgrounds gets a large number of visitors once, two weeks a year, but, you know, I don't know. How it will effectively screen under Q, T, C, the access road turnaround space and parking for ensuring emergency and service access. And I want to point out to commissioners, and I just discovered this under W, a pre-application meeting shall also include a site visit if there has not been a prior site visit for the requested site, so either we schedule a site visit and go onsite and make it public so everybody can be there to view that, or everybody goes on their own, but it does include a site visit.
Again, would you want to do the site visit before they came down to make a presentation, so we can see everything?
That would probably be the most effective, so that questions that come up there can be addressed if they come back.
Would we want to do it next week sometime?
Could we do it the next meeting, instead of a meeting?
Or before?
Yeah, twelve o'clock.
I'd say before a meeting.
Might have a whole or lot split on the agenda next, next meeting.
He said he's got a year.
Well, I meant if we, if we met on site, say at ten thirty or something, I don't know, it's your, your time, I apologize, or eleven, or.
Do you want the applicant there?
I am, I could do it most days, so I could do it next week, if we wanted to do it next week, if we wanted to do it prior to the next meeting, the morning of the next meeting.
How about twelve o'clock, the next meeting?
Pardon me?
How about a twelve o'clock, the next meeting?
Meet there?
Yeah.
And then come up here?
Yeah. Then it would be nice to be all together. Would, how would we enter? Through the fairgrounds?
Next to the, yes, yeah. As if, same entrance you would enter to go to OSU extension.
Extension, to the back of OSU extension.
And then you just, you drive past that and go up.
Just wondered, I mean, because by our mere presence, I think people will become aware, and there's nothing wrong with people being aware.
Well, what about if, if you want to do it the day of the next meeting, what about like eleven o'clock?
No can do.
No?
Oh, I think that's what she's saying, maybe.
No, I can't, I mean, but I think that we have to do it, and it, this is the first one that's on private property, right?
It's the first new tower.
On private property.
Can we do it at noon next Thursday? And then just have a discussion about potential questions before the following meeting, or?
I don't see any point in fast-tracking it, but. I might not remember.
I don't have a problem with that.
I can't see it, all everybody schedules from there.
You could do it after, after the, the next regular meeting.
That would be good.
You know, the next regular meeting, we can expedite it for any cases, and if there's no cases, then you could just have a site visit that starts at twelve forty-five or something like that, and disband the meeting from there.
Okay.
That way, it's already in line with Patty's notification process.
Okay.
Well, I could keep going, Rick, but basically, it's every single component in here to be checked.
Correct.
Because even in forty-three oh nine, it's titled Shared Use of Wireless Telecommunication Facilities and Other Structures, it says the city, as opposed to the construction of a new tower, shall prefer locating on existing towers or other structure without increasing the height. And that this applicant shall submit a comprehensive report inventorying these existing towers and other suitable structures within two miles of the location of the proposed new tower, unless they can show that some other distance is more reasonable. So really, that's just speaking to the distance, meaning why an existing tower or other suitable structure cannot be used.
I'm confident that they're all things that they're working on.
Okay.
They, Sprint and Verizon and AT&amp;T and all of them, they as well would prefer to co-locate rather than have to build new, just because of the costs of co-locating versus new construction and all of this.
I'm just curious as to what they say in terms of the need, when we do have a structure here on top of the parking garage, and they're just stating that they, you know, to lessen a load. I, I have a certain provider for my cellular service, and I haven't noticed any change in terms of my.
Well, I think they're, they're looking more in terms of, especially with the height that they were talking about, that they would prefer, is that they're seeing this more as future.
I think they said that.
And, you know, they're basically saying that this current site was overloaded, or getting overloaded.
Right.
Plus the fact that additional companies will want to piggyback on, which is, again, the reason for the.
The height of the tower.
For the height of the tower versus what the fairgrounds had preferred.
We're also, they're also supposed to submit to that, to us, what are these future lesses, and what will that be? I can't remember the language, but I've taken up too much time already going through this.
You will not be admonished.
It's very, it's very complicated.
It is.
And it's, towers of this nature are not, in general terms, welcome in communities. And then there's a balance with what everybody's expectations are with those devices that everybody in this room is, has in their pockets right now. And what we want out of those, and what they're actually, they are going to do for us down the road, I mean, it's, it's a, it's a very difficult balance.
But before we move on, this communication was concerning the map.
Yes.
With the, with the positions that they would review from. Does that meet the commissioners' requirements? Because these are the ten areas that we feel within a one-mile radius for requests on the code, is that would be advantageous to be viewed from. So if they decide to do their balloon tests after our next meeting, then they would use this map to identify those, from those areas.
What date do they desire to come back here, and?
It's whatever date we want them to come back.
Okay.
He emailed, I received an email from him this morning asking that, and I did not respond, not knowing, so.
But as far as being put on the agenda, they're, they're obviously, the sooner the better, right?
Well, obviously, the sooner the better. Correct.
Okay. But us going out there and checking out the site as one unit is not really holding them back significantly on it?
I do not think so.
Okay.
Or determining the balloon test?
Or determining the balloon test, that's.
Anything else at this point? So we will adjourn our meeting the next time, which would be, and then go out to the site after that?
After.
Okay.
Would you want the applicant present for that?
We seem to have a lot of questions, and it isn't, what is the radius that it's supposed to be?
One mile.
One mile.
Again, these were just Rick and I's suggestions. We said at the last meeting that we would put some suggestions. You guys can scrap these, you can add to it. Rick and I are indifferent to it, we just, we just want to get it moving.
Right.
Just said we would try to help out.
I was wondering if the one that is labeled two would be up the hill, on the ridges, or no?
From what we had identified, that would be on the down, on the down riverside.
Down riverside.
Because there, there won't be any visibility at all there, I don't think.
Well, I think that's, it, from the way I view it, that should be, you would want to figure out where can you see these things, and where can you not see it as well?
There's no development up there, but on the other hand, there might be in the future.
Yeah, this, I was identifying that as the area near Whites Mill, Nancy.
I was thinking, because you've got quite a bit of distance back to the limit of your one mile, that's why I was thinking maybe on the hill would be, uh, what, I know, I don't really care, because there's no one there.
Again, we can add.
I do care about where people are.
Right, we can add.
I want them to know, and they want us to know, that we're exercising due diligence with respect to their needs and the larger community.
We are not limited to viewing places, we can suggest as many as we wish. We just pick ten. If you wish to add more, then we can do that.
I just wonder if a topographical map would assist us in this or not. You know, to pick eight way out at Stimson, and where are we? Below Palmer. Seems pretty low.
But it's one mile.
Yeah.
Unless they want to go over to Roosevelt right there. Which is high, or grov enough. So it just means the east side of town won't have much visibility at all, it's mostly west and north.
Would it be better for us, rather than asking them to, well, if they wanted to come down here on the nineteenth to answer any questions when we were out there, but just as far as it gives us the opportunity then to generate the questions that we would either pass on to them, they're good with that, or get in touch with them as far as, okay, here definitely is the, the final listing of, you know, questions that we have going forward before you submit the application.
How are the commissioners wishing to do this?
The issue related to site reviews is that we can just go and, and look.
Okay.
We can't convene, discuss, and what have you during that site visit, so that's why I think it's important that we come back here and have the meeting. Just begin our meeting with a site review and then travel back to City Hall.
Okay, that makes sense. Okay, so we would.
So you think meet there at noon and then come back and have the actual meeting? That's fine with me.
And our agenda could read site visit, and it could be from noon to, no, eleven twelve.
Depends how cold it is, huh?
You need your snowshoes.
Okay, so then we would.
I can attempt to see if I can't get a vehicle, if we would want to meet here, drive together, come and get dropped back on.
Good.
Patty, help me on that, please.
So we'll go ahead and just reverse that, and we'll meet out there first, prior to the meeting on the nineteenth, and then we'll come back here and reconvene and discuss, along with the rest of the agenda on the nineteenth.
So let's amend it a little bit. Should Patty find a bus, then we'll start here and go out there, right? Is that what?
Or a little minivan?
Or a minivan.
So if we're riding together, we'll meet here at noon?
Why not just like out front, jump in the van, go, come back, and then?
So that will cut down on the amount of traffic.
In the van I don't have, but we're going to work on.
Yeah. I could take my car, but.
Do you have to do the site visit as a group, or?
We do not.
Can people go individually, as long as you don't have quorum?
But what's the point? I mean, as I said earlier.
I don't know, I'm just, I'm just asking for convenience sake, for the, doesn't matter to me.
Yeah, but it isn't supposed to be. I'm sorry, but Paul, I think that it isn't necessarily only convenient, but it's to attest that we are all there, and it's.
Totally fine.
Public relations.
Just asking.
I hate to even use that word, but I think it's important.
Okay, that's, that's why I was asking.
Here we go, then, okay.
So we'll wait for Patty to try to see if she can help us coordinate our activity in two weeks.
So again, I hate to be persistent, but is this map okay?
I'm not saying it's okay. How can I say it okay when we have so many questions?
Okay, great.
And somebody else might have a different statement.
It'll be two-two then.
So I need to know.
I think, I think in terms of the photo sites that you've got, you're proposing, I think it makes sense, you have a balance, like, you know, as far as knowing the various areas that you're talking about, I think you're covering a lot of the balance between higher and lower facility, or land sites, so I think that makes sense there.
Nothing. I would add, never mind, I already said I wouldn't approve any of them. Don't know how this process works. I mean, there's nothing at the hospital, and that would probably be in a fairly direct line of sight. And.
So Paul, are you saying you would like one at the, rather than just pointing out, would you like one at the hospital? Is that what you're saying?
I'm throwing.
We can add.
We can add, yeah.
Please do, that's what we're trying to accomplish here. If you'd like one at the hospital, that would be well. Nancy, I think you said you'd want one on the top of the hill near the ridges?
Well, no, I just meant, I, I, I don't know how much it costs, what the benefit is, but I would think, I wanted to know if it's going to be low or high. That's what I wanted to know, the, the location, because the distance back to the limit is quite substantial compared to six eighty-two. It's not half a mile, though, it's maybe like a quarter of a mile, according to your scale, if it scales correct.
Well, what about at the, talking about additions, the University Commons property itself? Since they'll have the grandest view of all, I guess, right?
Wonder if you can see it from West Elementary, that may or may not be there.
West Elementary, okay.
Well, I mean, all these, this is all residential right there.
Four people. This one's good. Because that kind of covers all.
So four, where did you put that? At the very back of the West State Street Fields, very end of the, just asking?
In the ballpark area, yeah, yeah.
Literally.
I mean, and there's a significant elevation difference, I think, maybe it's not that significant. I was just kind of circling and showing Commissioner Bain, who's right next to me, the Winfield Blue Line Blick area has residences, I, I don't know.
That one really will take in that whole new shit, so it's okay.
Yeah, that's good, five is good.
A substantial number of people living within the hundred miles, I, one mile, I guess. And this one has Ice Street and Bear.
That's the very, like, the Bromley curve almost.
I don't know about the, currently the field across from Jefferson, to the left of the hospital.
Okay.
But that would.
Maybe.
Maybe not.
I mean, there's really nothing, I don't know, there is one, you know, it's right there.
Anything else? Okay, so I think those would be the additions we would request.
Okay. So my, what I heard was five additions, the Blue Line area, the field to the west of the hospital, south of Jefferson. And I assume we would want to be on the south side of University Commons Apartments, closest to the tower.
Okay.
Okay. I think we've got it.
Anything else, at this point? Okay. Christie?
Good.
Thank you.
Very good.
Let's move to reports from the city planner, Mr. Loeb.
I don't really have much today, we're still getting caught up from the holidays, so.
Okay. Happy New Year to you, then. Let's see, Mr. Saroy?
Same here, we're getting caught up.
Okay.
With the New Year.
Thank you. There is no one in our live audience to address the planning commission, announcements and other business. Our next meeting then would be January 19, 2017, meeting here briefly, and then going out to the fairgrounds, and then reconvening, probably about 12:45, 1 o'clock.
I'm hoping earlier than that.
Hopefully, earlier than that, but, you know.
And do you want the applicants here?
Yes.
Do we do?
We would.
Okay. I'm thinking money. Okay.
Sure. We'll just do that. Thank you.
At least one of them.
Okay, anything else? With our business concluded, the meeting stands adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.